Get us started if that's, if that works. So, um, welcome everyone. I'm gonna call us to order at 6:03. And this is the annual reorganization meeting. Thank you for bumping it up a couple of days so that we could do our business. This is the meeting that I called to order and the first order of business is I'm gonna ask for nominations for chair. Ursula.
I'd like to nominate Flor Diaz-Smith for chair.
Second.
Thank you Ursula and Joshua. Are there any other nominations?
Can we hear a speech?
Flor.
Do you wanna, you wanna hear me talk more?
You have the floor.
I, I would be honored to continue to be your, your chair. I, I take it really seriously and I see myself more as an aspiring leader, you know, that serves you and I'm trying always my best to lead you the best I can and make sure that, that, you know, we are all moving towards what's best for all kids and trying to make sure that, you know, we're all, the well-being of you guys is as important to me as the well-being of the system and trying to support our superintendent too and our leaders and I, I love this district. I love the kids and I'll be honored to serve for another year if you will have me.
While we're on the record, I would just like to say that, um, Flor, your work with the Vermont School Board Association is amazing and your work at the legislature is amazing and your guidance, both how we get through meetings, how we get through tough subjects, and your work with the administration is really exemplary. So thank you for wanting to do the chair again.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Natasha, we have a nomination on the floor to elect Flor as the chair, just. Okay. Seeing no hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we do not need to do a roll call since there are no opposed and Flor, congratulations. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, everybody. I'm honored and thankful and we have a lot to get through, but I'm excited for another year and we'll get through this physical time and come out stronger. So we have a lot to cover today and we're just gonna jump right into it. I know that we, we hadn't scheduled public comments today. We have a couple of people here, but we're gonna wait until the end, if that's okay with people unless I just know that Ellen fell off the call, so.
Flor. I would, I would favor hearing from people. I would hear favoring from people beforehand because it's such an unusual time for us in terms of having a failed budget, which will take up a lot of our time and to hear public comments before we move on to other reorganizational aspects, I think would, I'd be happy to hear that.
Okay, so are there any members of the public? Please raise your hand. That wanna speak right now that have joined the meeting to make a public comment. Okay. Seeing no hands up unless I'm missing something. Megan, do you see any? And I don't see anybody. So I think we can continue. I think they're mostly observers. I think the only person that might have been dropped. So that's, we'll continue with our business for right now. So the, the second part of this is to continue to elect our, our officers. So I'm looking for a nomination for vice chair.
So can I raise another point of order here? And it has to do with the steering committee. And I know that certain officers are members of the steering committee as well and the, we're supposed to have, I think, representation from all the towns without any one being overweighted. And I think when we ended up last year, Middlesex was overweighted in representation because of the officers. If I'm wrong about that, then I apologize, but I thought there was an overweight in Middlesex representation on the steering committee. And is there a way we could address that if it was, if that's accurate?
So would it be okay to address that when we talk about the steering committee? Cause there's ways to either expand the steering committee and let the officers be the officers that the board would wanna appoint? Does that make sense?
It would. But I just, I'm worried about, about the balancing. However, we achieve it is fine. So.
Okay, we'll make sure to balance it and then move into nominating a vice chair or Megan, go ahead.
Well, this just might help get through the officers. I don't think it's the officers that may, if it was disproportionate and I'm not sure it was, it wasn't the officers, cause we had East Montpelier in Flor, Callis in Kari and Joshua and as clerk. And then the others would have been the chairs of our committees. So it's the chairs of the committees that may be. So I just wanted to point that out. I don't know that the officers are what tipped the scales last year.
Yeah, and, and I'm not aware, I'm not aware that it's the chair of a committee that gets on the steering committee as opposed to.
So Chris, Chris, I think it was near the end. So it was when Jonah stepped off, I think that there was some shuffling. And I think that was, and we all had acknowledged that that was due to the fact that it was because there was no reason to kind of shift, you know, a Dodi representative in there because we were so close to the election time. So I think that's when it started to, might have looked that way, but typically it is pretty balanced.
Okay, I'm just. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments regardless regarding that? Otherwise. Okay, I'm looking for a nomination for vice chair.
I nominate Ursula Stanley to vice chair.
Second.
Thank you. So Keely moves it, Joshua second set. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Unanimously appointed Ursula, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so now to the third officer, I'm looking for a nomination for clerk.
I would nominate Diane if she's willing to serve.
Well, Joshua had stepped in. I just, as long as Joshua, I mean, I'm happy to do that, but Joshua, if you're enjoying that role, I don't wanna.
Um, I'd be happy to do that. I'm not sure. I mean, to Chris's point, I mean, you know, that means there are two representatives from Middlesex. I don't know if you all feel comfortable with that. I know we did, I know I jumped on there at the end, but now as Ursula is the vice chair, I mean, I just thought I would point that out.
Any, any other discussion?
I would second Diane, but I don't know if we need a second before discussion, but if we do, I second.
Okay.
Not that I don't think Joshua does a great job. Yeah.
Okay, so and the way it works is that we can have two people nominated. So if there was somebody else that wants to nominate Joshua and then just count the votes, it's the pleasure of the board. Or if, you know, if we just have one nomination, that's okay too. So are there any other nominations for clerk?
I don't quite know how to do this. Joshua, do you, I, I feel like we need a little bit of discussion. Do we need to nominate Joshua first? I, I just.
So how about this? I'll nominate Joshua for clerk as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the best, yeah, to make it fair. Okay. Okay. And then it gets a little complicated in, in the, in the vote and because we're not in person and it's a little bit hard to send, to send ballots. So Megan, I don't know if you have any, any thoughts. Sometimes what we do at the SBI is that people just send an email with their vote. So it's just, if, you know, like easier or, I don't know if you have any thoughts.
Could we do a chat to the host?
You can do a chat.
Perfect.
Direct chat to me. I also just, you also wanna make sure Diane already did, that both accept the nomination before you vote. And then, yes, you could.
Joshua, do you accept nomination?
And just do direct message to me probably actually would be easiest. Or no, maybe Flor to Flor.
Flor, I think Flor.
Yeah, yeah, cause it'd be easier to count. Yeah. Joshua, you accept the nomination?
Oh, excuse me. Sorry. I didn't know I had to, yes, yes, I accept.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now if you can direct message to me on the chat, that'll be great.
And if you're, I don't, I don't think I.
Just give me a minute, cause I have to go one. All right. Okay, I think I counted right. So Diane is our clerk. Okay. Thank you both. All right. Moving right along. Now we have all of the officers. And as we move back, I'm just gonna go with the little memo and we'll move into committees after. So we'll just go in the order of the, of the memo. Yeah. So we're gonna stay, are we okay with saying I need a motion for our current board meeting? First and third Wednesday. Go ahead Ursula.
I move that we would continue with our current board meeting schedule of the first and third Wednesdays of the month with the first meeting being an educational meeting at our elementary schools.
And the second being that.
The second being our business meeting, business heavy meeting.
All right.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Michelle. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Yeah, and then just, I, I would like, well, maybe, I don't know if we need to do a motion, but that all our meetings will have a virtual option. And then our board has the ability still through this year to have, like today, we did a virtual meeting just to make it go to. So we wanna continue to have that, but I don't think we need a motion for that. Megan, what do you, what do you think? It's just a practice.
Yeah, you don't necessarily need a practice. I think it's leftover from last year. You wanted to have that discussion about whether or not you were moving one way or the other, and then the law allowed for hybrid for longer. So I think it is just affirming how the board wants to do it.
And is there agreement with the board that we would operate, you know, in what is best and continue to have a hybrid, but if necessary, we would have a hybrid meeting when needed? Everybody okay with that? Yeah. Okay. All right.
I also, I was just gonna explain, I think my message to Melissa got lost in translation a little bit. We will cross-reference the board meeting dates with holidays to make sure none fall. And it's not quite cross-referenced here, so we won't take time tonight. So if any of our established board meetings fall on, that did happen not this year, but last year. So we'll just try to get ahead of that. So we will let you know.
Yeah. And that, that is just a short list for right now, but yeah, so. If you see any, please email us. So now we can move into committees. I'm not gonna go ahead and, cause we have a lot of returning board members. We all know what committees are. So I'm not gonna read what, what our committees do, but you know, they expedite the work of the board. They're really important for us in order to operate properly. And we have, we're gonna start by the steering committee. So right now we have the, we have somebody from East Montpelier. We have somebody from Middlesex. And we have somebody from Berlin as our clerk. So we're looking to add somebody from Callis and Worcester to, to the steering committee. So we'll be looking for nominations for the, for the steering committee. Daniel, you have been the one posting recently. So you and Michelle get to decide, cause you're the two, who wants to be in the steering committee.
I don't feel strongly. I guess I have some reservations not knowing when they meet and what the time obligation is.
So the steering, the steering committee meets the second, I'm gonna get it wrong now. It's second Wednesday, second Wednesday of the month before our third Monday. It used to be the first Wednesday, but we can always, depending on the composition of the steering committee, we could try to adjust that. It's usually helpful to have it at least a Wednesday before our meeting so that we can have what we need for the packet and adjust it so that we can all look at the agenda together. So it's not just the chair and Megan looking at the agenda. And that has worked really well. So it's, it's at nine. It's, and yeah, nine to 10.
Is that a virtual meeting Flor?
Yes, a virtual meeting. It's a virtual meeting. Yeah.
Doesn't fit into my schedule at the end.
It's pretty, it's pretty painless having done it.
Yes.
It's not that much time.
Yeah.
I have a standing meeting at that time.
Okay, so Daniel, you're saying yes. Okay. So I'm looking for another one and then somebody can make a formal motion to appoint it to, Worcester, who's gonna be?
Well, I would nominate Natasha because I, I can't make it at that time. So, I mean, I can't do Wednesday mornings. I don't know how much will matter.
I can't either. I've got standing commitments at work at that time.
So we might have to look at that.
What? Can we reconsider the meeting time based on who's on the board, like who's on that?
Yeah, I think, yeah. So if you guys wanna nominate somebody and then we will figure out the schedule.
Do we, do we anticipate another Berlin, another Worcester member? So maybe we leave it open until we have another Worcester member?
Yeah, we can do that. We can do that too. If that's what, Worcester representatives right here, that'll be the pressure of them right now.
Yep.
Is that what you would like to do Natasha and Michaelan?
Who would you rather explore other meeting?
I would rather not leave it empty.
Yeah, same here. I'd rather see if we could find another. I mean, if it's, honestly, putting another meeting on my schedule is really gonna be difficult, but, I mean, I could do, I could do earlier on Wednesday.
Yeah, that's, we can, we can figure that out with the committee if, if one of you decides who wants to do it. So then we're working either with your schedule Natasha or with Michaelan's schedule. So just decide between the two of you. So Natasha is doing other stuff too. So Michaelan, do you wanna be in the steering committee?
Sure.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
And now I'm looking for. Yeah, I'm looking for a formal nomination of both Daniel and Michaelan for the steering committee.
I nominate Michaelan.
And both, you can do both.
Oh, and Daniel.
I second.
So Natasha nominated and I think Chris beat you to it, Michelle.
And I'm gonna defer to the, the new board member and we should give her an introduction to our district because I don't know how familiar she is with it. But hopefully she'll be able to learn over the weekend or something. Hey, Michelle?
We're, we're gonna get to that in a little bit, but just to wait. Okay, all those in favor of Michaelan and Daniel appointed to the steering committee, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
Can I ask an organizational question Flor? We have a steering committee on the books for this coming Wednesday. Does not have to stay on the books. The question is, do you want Melissa to send a poll out? Or maybe just connect? Maybe Michaelan, you can, you and I can talk. What's the easiest way? Or do you want the rest of the steering committee to meet on Wednesday and then have the first agenda item be to schedule a new meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think the steering committee and Michaelan, the steering committee does need to meet this Wednesday because of where we are right now. But we will make sure to connect with you regardless of the time and then send a doodle poll to, so that we can adjust it after that meeting so that we can have
Okay.
A meeting that works for you.
How about Michaelan? I'll, you and I can connect and I'll copy Melissa so she has it too and get a sense of dates and times that do work for you. And then I can bring those to the steering committee on Wednesday so that we can make the change right there. Okay.
Right. Okay, so now policy committee, three members. You can just volunteer your hand and we can, you know, we have.
Continue on the policy committee.
So we have Chris, Natasha, Amelia. Yes, yeah, Amelia. Okay. And I'm looking for a nomination for the three members of, for Chris, Natasha and Amelia.
I move to nominate Amelia Contrada, Natasha Eckardt and Chris McVeigh to the policy committee.
Thank you, Daniel.
I second.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna give it to SAC, that Ursula. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Moving into the negotiations committee, we won't have negotiations for the next three years, but I think it's always good to have a negotiations committee. We should have one for, cause there are some other things that you guys need to do.
And I have a question. It says three, but last year we had four.
Yeah, the three is just the minimum of board members that is good to have, but we can have as many as, cause like the quality committee will have a lot of people, so.
I'm happy to stay on the committee.
Thank you, Joshua.
I, I am too. And I would hope Diane is as well.
Yeah. Not sure happy is quite the right word, but yes, I'll be pleased to continue that work.
Okay, Joshua, Diane and Chris. Good. Anymore? Okay, I'm looking for a nomination.
I nominate Joshua Savitz, Diane Nicole Fleming and Chris McVeigh to the negotiations committee.
I second.
Thank you, Michaelan. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. We have negotiations committee. Okay, education quality committee. Ursula, yes. So Ursula, Diane, Michaelan, Daniel, me, and SAC. All right. So Lisa, are you with us? So I'm looking for somebody to make a nomination of Ursula, Diane, Michaelan, Daniel, SAC and myself.
Yep.
So moved.
All right. And second by?
Second. Amelia.
Amelia. Thank you, Amelia. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Any opposed? Hearing none. We have education quality committee. It's exciting that it's always the most popular one. Okay, finance committee. SAC, Michelle, Ursula.
I would like to serve as well if possible.
Okay, so Chris, that committee does meet on the morning. Chris, SAC.
And again, the reason I'm bringing myself forward is because of the reconfiguration or the configuration study, you know what I mean? So that, I will, I mean, I'll, I'll watch the videos again of the meetings, but again, the reason I'm putting my name forward. So if there's a Berlin person on it, then I'm happy to step back. Was there a Berlin? Keely, did you wanna be on that or able to be on that? Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I really appreciate you Diane.
Oh yeah, no, no, that's fine. I just wanted to.
And I similarly, I've been on the reconfiguration side of things. I wouldn't mind being on finance in general. I just can't do Tuesday mornings either, but, but.
Yeah, we're gonna continue to have the configuration committee.
I'm raising my.
Yeah, and we're, yeah. We might need to expand the configuration committee anyways, but we, yeah, so. So we have Chris, but just to make sure that.
Sorry. It sounded like you were getting ready to review the names anyway, cause I didn't, I didn't get them all.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And yeah, I'm just gonna review the names, but also make sure that we, that, that we are, we are gonna continue, especially cause that next meeting is tomorrow morning. We're gonna continue with the one meeting in the morning and one meeting that we're doing before our meeting in the afternoons. At least for right now, cause we are.
I did schedule for tomorrow morning, so I'll be there tomorrow.
Okay, so, so we're gonna nominate Chris, SAC, Michelle, Diane and Michaelan and myself. And who am I missing? And Ursula, right?
And Daniel had his hand up as well.
Daniel, I just, yes, yeah, I was just missing our, my current, so Daniel, Ursula, SAC and myself are the current members. We're adding Michelle, Chris, Diane and Michaelan, right? Did you get that confusing thing, Lisa?
I did. Thank you. Yep, thanks.
All right. And, and who's making the motion?
So moved.
And Amelia, thank you. And second by?
Seconded.
Okay, my Michelle, Michelle. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And now we get to the transparency officers. So.
What about our representative to the Central Vermont Career Center?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm like, I wrote all over there, so I don't, I just, yes, very important. Thank you. And Jody is here. So we need to appoint somebody to the Central Vermont Career Center. I've been talking to somebody in this. I was hoping that Jody is looking now, very intent. Joshua, are you still willing to do it?
Oh, I would love to do it. Yes, um, yes, sure. I would love to do that. It would be, yeah, right. Sorry, that sounded very non-committal, but.
Yeah, no, no, that would be great. Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna nominate Joshua and all of his enthusiasm for this position.
I'll second.
Jody, it's real enthusiasm, I promise.
Jody, it's real enthusiasm, I promise.
So nominated by Ursula and second by Chris, is that right?
Yep.
All right. And I'm staying with this committee, Jody, do not. Yeah, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 You pose. Hearing none, the Career Center. A board member. Thank you for being here, Jody. Okay.
Welcome, Josh.
Yeah, he'll be awesome. He'll be happy. Right. Now moving into the trend officers. Thank you, Ursula, for catching that. And. So the motion is right there. So I'm looking for somebody to nominate for Berlin. Celia and on and on. I don't want to read it twice, and I'm assuming you have the packet in front of you, too, Lisa. Go ahead, Ursula.
I nominate Celia Guzman for Berlin, Cat Fair for Callis, Gillian Fuqua for Worcester. Carolyn May for Middlesex, Alicia LaFord for East Montpelier, and JB Hilfertie for U thirty-two for Toronto.
Thank you, Ursula. Second. For Daniel. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Moving right along, we are gonna agree that we will use Robert rules.
Yep.
Okay. And then we included a copy of the board norms. In the in the packet, and we can, we can look at that. We'll update them at our retreat. This summer. So, um, go ahead, Diane.
Um, so it's kind of ironic, but don't we have to vote to agree to use Robert rules? Shouldn't we have a?
Up to you whether or not you want to vote to adopt them because they are your default.
Okay.
Yeah.
But but it's up to you.
Yes, if I knew Robert's a little better, maybe I would have known that, but okay.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't bother with it because we did not operate with it. We would be not complying with open meeting law because we're a group bigger than. Thirteen two, and even for a group smaller, we would have to do it, but. It. But we like asking the question anyways, but it's just a good question, Diane. It's so. But I don't think we have to because we better. And I think we'll agree that. But we, I would like to have a a motion to accept our norms. Diane, Daniel.
You. I I'd like. To move that. That we adopt our norms. And. Um, subject to consensus. Change them as needed, but for now, I think they've been great, serving us great.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel. Second by Chris. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Yeah. And then. We're moving into our communication practices. And we have to agree that the chair is this program for the full board and this is a very ten minutes program for the district. And best practice is the puppy is to bring down and the chair in communications. We, this is more of a practice. We are really good at it. Is there any questions on it? Thank you. There was. There was vacuuming, so he's closing the door, sorry. We could have a motion of this, but I don't. It's, you know, it's more of a practice and an understanding, really. So I'm okay either way. Megan, do you feel strongly one way or another or?
Sorry, I couldn't find my unmute button. Nope, I'm comfortable.
Okay. Any questions on that? Everybody comfortable with that? Right. So. Let's move to. Our scheduled annual. Board session. This year it would be, remember, we keep talking about it since last year, and we were trying to keep it on the same date, so the it would be either August sixth or August eighth. We could send. A poll to see what works best for you guys, but this is what we've had since last year. And I know it's hard to. Get everybody. We were trying to do it earlier, especially, you know, my, I got really strong. Feedback last year, so I'm trying to keep it within the dates that everybody said, yes, so hopefully this works. So should we send a doodle poll or? What did you say, Chris?
I would say send a doodle doodle. Yeah, doodle poll would be great.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll have Melissa send a doodle poll for. Yep. And. And then let's move to the locations for our. Posting our agendas. So this, you know, we've we have trimmed this over the years, so we have each school, the Washington Central. Website and each town.
What do you mean each town?
But it's town clerk. Yeah, it's get email and each town clerk posted posts in their town clerk's office, so. Could I have a motion if people agree with that?
I move that the meetings be posted. Uh, at each school in the district. And at each town clerk's office and with each town clerk by email. Is that right?
Each town clerk, yeah, yeah, we email them and they post it physically. It's supposed to be. Yeah.
And the district website.
And the district website.
Second by Ursula, I think. Right, Daniel. Hey, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And then the posting of the minutes, they're posted in our website.
Sorry, who seconded? Who seconded the one where you're posting the agendas? It was.
Ursula.
Ursula.
Thank you.
So I'm looking for a motion to post our minutes on our on our website.
I move that we post the minutes of our meeting on the district website.
Second. All right, Killy, was that you?
I actually was not one of those.
Diane, I don't know, I'm like.
I think it was Natasha and Michael like unanimously. Like in the same.
Yeah, I saw Michael and I was just laughing, but I didn't. Okay, so Michael. And Ursula, Ursula, I moved it. Second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Good. And now we need a motion to designate our newspaper record. Mr. Docor is here.
I moved to designate. Our newspaper record as the Times, I guess.
Thank you. Okay, second by Sac, so Killy and Sac. Or is that right? Right, just two people spoke at the same time.
Yeah.
All those who feel up, please signify by saying aye.
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 Yeah. I'm not. I'm not sure we're gonna need this this year, but let's just appoint. And somebody to be the voting delegate for the statewide health insurance. And we need to designate that by April first. So.
What is this position for?
Yeah, this is that we just ratified. There's the statewide contract health insurance gets negotiated statewide, and we get it one vote. Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a voting delegate to ratify the vote, basically. Yeah.
Who has been our voting delegate in the past?
So we did not need it last year. I have been our voting delegate in 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 the past, but it can be anybody.
Nominate floor.
In the voting on one particular. That's, okay, I was seconding that.
The ratification of health contracts, basically, you know, the ratification of, and Megan, you can help me here. Yeah.
Yeah, if if there is a negotiation for for a successor healthcare agreement, then. Board members from across the state have to ratify it. So she's not our negotiator.
No.
She's just our, your vote.
Okay.
We just ratified what they decided on, so we, you know, each site, it's it's a process that hasn't gone perfect, so I'm. My little sarcastic about it, so I don't get into it, but, you know, we. We need to have a representative. Yes, I'm familiar with the process. We we appoint delegates. So. I'm happy to serve. Michelle, you nominated myself. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sac. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And. And then we included the code of ethics. Yeah. Obviously, you, if you wouldn't mind signing it and giving it to me on Wednesday, that would be great. Yeah. And I understand there's some that don't feel like they want to sign it, and that it's okay, too. But you could sign the code of ethics and give it to me on Wednesday. That would be awesome. It's included in your packet.
Will you bring some copies on Wednesday?
That's what I was gonna ask. If you could bring some copies.
There, we'll bring some copies on Wednesday. And then on the open meeting law, I was just providing the same link as last year. This is it's a great little webinar on open meeting law. Yeah, we do a lot to. Do professional development as a board. We are also gonna talk in a minute about our professional development, but there's some links to that. Then the individual board development, as you know, that is something that is really key, and I think it's made us a really good board. Uh, across the state, and we do a really good job about using time to learn as a board. So there's a couple of, some of you are familiar with that. Yeah, I think we just have one. New board member, and that is you, Michelle. So this is your time to introduce yourself. Think you know everybody, but you are, and now you have a different hat. It's the new board every time we have a new board member, so please go ahead, introduce yourself and.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um. Michelle Sepka, I live in Callis, been here for. Since nineteen ninety-one. Um, both of my kids have gone through the school. Some of you know my kids. Some of you I know from when you were in school. Um. So, yeah, I worked in the district for almost twenty-eight years. So I'm familiar with a lot of things that have gone on or go on in Washington Central over the years. And I'm happy to, I always wanted to be on the board, and I couldn't because I worked in the district. So. I'm happy to be able to serve this time.
Thank you, Michelle, and welcome. So. So there I, we added the two dates, May sixth and May fifteen, and then you can just like click on that link if you have not PDF, and it takes you right there. Even if you can't attend that day, you would get all the all the documents. Michelle, we will get you a book. Everybody else has their Vermont School Association. Yeah, book. If you don't have one, please let me know, but I believe everybody in this call has one. And. And now, Megan, we talked about two two dates for doing board orientation. We originally wanted to do this on our meeting on Wednesday. That was our plan. That's how we did it last year. I don't know if you guys remember, we were. In in Callis and. We had some for learning this year because we had to shift and quickly. Move into the gears into what we need to do for the budget. We were, we took it out, so we have all of that time for for budgeting, and we were gonna propose two dates to you guys, the fourteen. And Megan, I'll let you take it from there.
Yeah, so the goal is that this would become a regular part of your meeting for new, not your meeting of your schedule for new board members, but any board member is welcome to attend and. Sort of loosely blocking off ninety minutes. It probably won't be quite ninety minutes. Um, and. This year, it feels like virtual would just be easiest. So the two date options, and it needed to work with central office administrators because they will join this to talk about their functional area. Is Thursday, the fourteenth, meaning this Thursday, or next Thursday, the twenty-first. Both would be six PM to seven thirty PM. Michelle, you you get priority to pick, and then obviously. Anyone is welcome.
I'm open either of those days.
Are there board members who want to join that have a date preference? And maybe that's putting people on the spot. Seeing no preference, it feels like something that should happen quicker. So if it works, Michelle, we'll do the fourteenth. Um, and I'll just have Melissa send the invite to everyone, and then you can make your own decision. It is. Um. Virtual, and it is an electronic handbook so that we'll send that out to everyone. Um. So that you have access to it, even if you can't attend. Thank you.
Sorry, Megan, what was the day?
Um, Thursday, the fourteen, from six to seven thirty PM.
Thank you.
And and all board members have access. We went through the handbook last year and 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 we'll look at it at our retreat, too, again. Yeah. And then the only date that I don't have here, Megan, and I would love if you have the. Our boardwork calendar, there is the our joint retreat with the with the staff, but I forget, with June fourteen, I think.
Let me look at that.
I want to make sure I'm not making that up. So that you guys can have it in your, and we'll have Melissa send that out to everybody, but we had locked it on our work plan last year.
Yep, it's June fifth.
We'll have access.
It's built in as a the same day a normal board meeting would have been. That's what it invited was the easiest. It'll just be a little longer. It would be five to, well, starts earlier, I guess, five to eight thirty. Location will be determined.
So I just wanted to put that back on your radar.
I was gonna say currently the calendars has it at four, from four to eight.
Great, it's four to eight.
Yeah, I, yes, yeah, and I think that's what we have decided so that we can get, so that we can get dinner in. Last year it was a little. Okay. And then the last part is this discuss our local and statewide education advocacy responsibilities is to mainly stay in form, you know, read your V S B A. Newsletters and and, you know, and participate, and, you know, Megan and I both try to send you when there's urgent matters and. Daniel, you have your hand up.
Well, I was just gonna ask, and I do so with some ambivalence, but. About the transportation committee, because I think I'm the only member of the transportation committee, and I've never had any. Function or activity related to that committee. I was curious if if it had a purpose. If we needed to keep it or whether we could just delegate its roles and responsibilities to finance.
I think that's what we did last year, Daniel, but I am.
Missed it.
Megan?
Uh, I was about to be chagrined to say I don't know about a transportation committee, so that means it preceded me.
You said one and Michelle, yeah, but last two years ago, we transitioned this. Michelle was part of this, and you can speak to it, Michelle. Yeah.
So the only time the transportation committee came together was when we were trying to determine if we were going to be changing bus routes or renegotiating the contract, but when we renegotiated this last time. We pretty much used the same bid specs as in the year before prior. Because they were, they were good. I mean, a lot of people in the state took our bid specs to use them. And, um. That was, that was it. So unless you're planning on looking at transportation in a different light. I think it's fine to let the finance committee do it.
Well, the finance committee review those. Yeah. Yeah, and that's where it should be. Yeah.
Yeah, I think I think that sounds good. I would just say I think we are considering looking at. Transportation in a different light coming up, but I think the finance committee and its reconfiguration. Format is also the place for that discussion.
Great, good point, Dan. Thank you. Okay. So unless I'm missing something that concludes all of our reorganization, we do have some members of the public. So I wanted to ask again if there was somebody that wanted to make a comment before we adjourn. If the board is okay with that, I'm going to open it to the public. If there's anybody here that wishes to make a comment. Please raise your hand. I don't see any hands. Asking one last time, is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none, we can adjourn unless there's anybody in the board that wishes to make a comment. Otherwise, we can adjourn by consensus.
Yeah.
You okay with that?
Yep, sounds good.